All right, I will call to order this April 8th, 2019, meeting of the Village of Trumansburg Board of Trustees. This is also our annual organizational meeting. All board members are present. We do have a change to the agenda if she makes it. Julia Ariaran from the Farmer's Market would like to speak to us. So I have put her in the agenda prior to the board member reports, so before item number eight, if she makes it. Item number three is the annual organizational meeting, beginning with mayoral appointments, slate of officers, and appointments to positions on the other two boards. No changes for this year. Deputy Mayor will be Deb Watkins. Fire Commissioner is Ben Darfler. EMS Commissioner is Ben Carver. DPW Water and Sewer, Deb Watkins. Police is Keith Hannan. Youth Commission is Ben Carver. Keith will also be our liaison to the Tompkins County Council of Governments. I am the board member representative to the Health Consortium. And Keith sits on the Trumansburg Chamber. You're on the board this year.
Promotion.
Yeah. Our slate of officers, most of these were appointed last year, so they are now in the second year of a two-year term. Village Clerk is Tammy Morse. Deputy Clerk Morgan Wright. Village Treasurer is Vicky Battalamenti. Records Management is Tammy Morse. Police Records Access Officer is Chief Nelson. Vicky's our Budget Officer. Receiver of Taxes is Tammy Morse, and I'm going to add Morgan Wright as Deputy Receiver of Taxes. Zoning Officer and Village Planner remain vacant positions. Tom Myers is our Code Enforcement Officer, Fire Inspection Officer, and is on an interim basis filling in for the day-to-day duties of the zoning officer. Village Attorney is Guy Crowe of Thaler &amp; Thaler. Our official bank is the Tompkins Trust Company. We have three official newspapers. One is a daily, the other are weeklies, The Ethical Journal, Trumansburg Free Press, and Tompkins Weekly. Sandy List is our Village Historian. Tom Major will be our Youth Program Director. John Gregory is our Youth Commission Representative. And for the first time officially, although he's basically done this for the last, God, thirty years. We're naming David Allen as our official Village Arborist.
So one thing I have to add is that there's actually two Youth Commission reps. There's one vacant seat because they ran out of seats.
Okay, so we have a vacancy if anyone is interested in the other Youth Commission seat. On the Planning Board, there was one-seat term expiration, which was Rick Geiger's. He has agreed to stay on for an additional five-year term. I am also exercising my right to appoint subject to board approval, an alternate to the Planning Board. I'm naming Steph Bailey, a village resident, formerly of the Tompkins Chamber, although she's recently taken a new position elsewhere, as an alternate to the Planning Board, which means she will be attending all Planning Board meetings. Is able to participate in discussion, but does not get to have a vote. If, in some circumstance, a Planning Board member has to recuse himself for some reason, then she could be, she could sit in for them. But in the meantime, she will be just our first alternate. On the ZBA, we had one term expiring, which was Neil Henninger's. And he has agreed to stay on for another, or be appointed to another five-year term. We do not currently have any alternates for the ZBA. Marriage Officers are myself, Deputy Mayor Watkins, and Planning Board Chair Jessica Giles. If there's no objection or discussion, then I would entertain a motion to accept the full slate of officers for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second. With the obvious caveat of the edits.
Yes, we have the edit of Morgan Wright as Deputy Receiver of Taxes, and we have a vacancy in the Youth Commission. With those edits included, any discussion? All right, hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, moving on to item 3C, which is essentially our annually renewed and reviewed village policies. We have meeting policies. Listed are the dates for our regular meetings for the next year with two TBDs in October and November because of Monday holidays. Special meeting rules are on page three. Quorum rules, executive sessions, most of these rules are pulled from New York State law requirements. Agendas can be set, or will be set, within two business days of the meeting. We have voting rules for board members, minutes requirements. Our Order of Business, which hasn't changed from this most recent year. Foil references, the foil section of Public Officers' Law. Our Advanced Approval of Claims Rules, which authorizes the Treasurer to pay certain bills ahead of time prior to approval as long as they have been shown to the board at the next meeting. We do allow village employees to attend schools and conferences, page five, subject to prior approval. We do enter into various shared public works services agreements as opportunity arises, bottom of page five, top of page six. Page six, our procurement policy, hasn't changed from last year. When we need quotes, how many quotes we need, based on dollar amount, page seven. Documentation requirements, page eight. And in addition, because we've been really lax in doing this forever, I've added the Investment Policy Review, two-thirds of the way down, page nine. The Investment Policy itself, which we just passed a couple of months ago, or renewed a couple of months ago, is Appendix A in the back of the agenda, which we, I have not made any changes to since we just adopted it in January. So unless there are any changes or discussion needed, I would entertain a motion to accept the remainder of the annual organizational meeting agenda and rules for the village for the 2019-2020 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Excellent. Item number four is our public hearing on our 2019-2020 budget, which has been properly noticed and published in accordance with state law. Before we open the public hearing, I just want to, for the one member of the public and for anyone who watches the video, this will be available online. I have two handouts, which I am going to, as I say, I am going to put online. One shows historical village assessment going back a decade, as well as the tax levy going back the same period of time. Obviously, everyone is aware that their assessments went up this year. However, that doesn't take effect until July. So this year's village budget does not use the new assessment numbers. School taxes will be the first thing that will be based off of the new assessment after July 1. So looking back at the last ten years, we see an increase in our assessment of roughly 2% a year, noting that almost all of that is based on valuation increase, not on any increase in supply. While our levy percentage increase is around 6.5%. So that leads to, should lead, I hope, to an interesting discussion about the something's got to give discussion. Either assessments are going to continue to go up and individual property owners are going to continue to bear more burden for more cost for more service, or we have to have a conversation about cutting services, or we need something to increase housing supply. Speaking of cutting services, the legal size handout, if anyone grabbed one, which again will also be made available online, these are rounded numbers, so don't look for the dollars and cents. But of the $2.8 million village budget in the general fund, which does not count Water and Sewer, I decided to break out by category where the money's being spent. Fifty-six and a half, so 57% of the money is spent on payroll or benefits. So actual pay, FICA, Medicare, New York State Retirement, and health insurance accounts for 57% of the general fund budget. 22% of the budget is other insurances, utilities, fuel, vehicle payments and maintenance, general maintenance, such as road paving, supplies for the various departments, and equipment for the various departments. And 15% of the budget is spent on reserve account savings and debt service. Add those three sections up, you get 94% of the budget spent on those things. We should always, I think, be fiscally responsible, but at the same time, I'm interested in all ears if anyone ever has a suggestion about which of those things the village should be doing without. And with that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the 2019-2020 budget. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Am I the public?
You are.
Nancy's public. Is it simple? Go over the, God, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Jack, that's 13 South Street. I was trying to find the budget online, the village website, and I don't know if I exactly found it. I found last year's budget and the investment strategy and whatnot that preceded that. It would be nice if the website was maybe redesigned so it would make it easier for us old and ignorant Interneters to have access to it. That's one thing. Now, this board is better than most boards as far as replying to public comment. The other boards, although they listen, they don't hear. They hear, but they don't take into account anything that the public says and moves on without discussing any of the public comment as a factor in how they're deciding issues. So they can listen to a half-hour public comment and just, "Public comment is over. Let's move on and vote on something," without discussing the inquiry. I think that's not a good way.
Jack, if you have other items, I do have a public comment period separate from this. This is just, this is just public hearing. So the legally required public hearing for the budget.
Okay, well, I noticed that office staff equipment was generally down as far as salary and equipment, although it's a very brief purview of the budget. I'm just reading it down. Is that the way the expenses will be going as far as needs?
There was some reallocation of... So everything that occurs in the front office is broken up between the general fund budget and Water and Sewer, because they do all the water billing out of the front office, the sewer billing, and so forth. So there is some, it's an art, not a science. There's some discretion as to how the monies are broken up between those departments. And some of that allocation did change slightly. Because of the amount of time that is being spent on things like water bills, that piece has been adjusted somewhat. So where you may see a bit of a decline in the general fund, it probably means that it was made up for on the water side.
Is that groupable? I mean, aren't they separate funds?
They're separate. They're separate funds. But if, we'll pick on Tammy because she's not here. If Tammy spends, if Tammy works a 40-hour week and she spends 30 hours on water issues, she's technically paid out of the water fund. If a year later, she's only spending 20 hours on it, she's now only paid 50% out of the water fund. So we can make those allocation changes. And then it either comes from property taxes or it comes from the water bill if the expenditure goes to water.
Okay.
So that may be where you've seen some of the difference.
So like that would be staffing and at the clerk's office.
Time spent, basically.
Okay, so there is a division between the Water and Sewer budget and the
Very much so.
General Municipal Works.
Very much so.
You also see that with DPW, because there are the public works separate from the Water and the Sewer. So that allocation also happens between those three.
So there are three separate budgets, I mean, or three separate accountings, Water, Sewer, DPW,
Water, Sewer, and DPW.
It's actually worse than that, because some of that stuff down gets divided into Fire and EMS departments.
Everything in the general budget, so especially the main office staff, their time is allocated to a department. Now, with the exception of Water and Sewer, all of those departments exist in the general fund, which hits property taxes, but Water and Sewer doesn't. So that's where you see kind of the biggest difference.
Right, and DPW has resources from the village budget.
So if it's plowing, road maintenance, mowing, that would be general fund. If it's water main breaks, or just regular water department or sewer department maintenance, that would be from those other budgets.
Okay. It's a lot of, you know, accounting.
It's a fair bit.
Let me just, give me a second here. Now, Steph Bailey as the alternate for the...
I'll take that in public comment period. We're sticking with budget.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Budget public hearing.
But, okay, well, that's my limited budget comment because of, I'm only on page seven of the budget because it was relatively difficult to find.
It was actually in the news section of the website. We posted it separately from everything else, along with the public hearing notice for the budget.
And the new website, the news section of the website.
It's not a news section. It's when you go on the website, it's over on the right-hand side. There's the news headlines.
Where it says news, there's a, yeah, there's one, there's a proposed budget that's right there and the hearings right below it.
Okay.
It wasn't hidden in there, but yeah, that's what happened.
Well, I left it up to somebody else to look for, but apparently it was overlooked. Anyhow, I take it back. It was so easy to find.
You're welcome to opine, Nancy, if you'd like.
No, I actually just had a question because we always, I'm curious about how other municipalities are paying their employees. Do you have a rate of increase projected? Again, is the increases and the decreases in the sections?
Yes, all village employees, all village employees with the exception of DPW, received a 3% cost of living adjustment. DPW received two, which was stipulated in their contract, which we signed last December. So they will be getting 2% per year for the next three years, inclusive of this year, per their contract. Everyone else is discretionary, and we went with a standard 3% this year. There would have been a couple of individuals who may have been adjusted specifically for them due to promotion, but I don't actually know that that happened this year. Two full-time police officers were hired, so although they were employed here previously, their new salaries were not necessarily commensurate with their old ones. Trying to think if there's anyone else. Kind of broad brush, since no one's here to ask. Village tax rate currently stands at $7.10 per 1,000. Will be increasing to $7.25 per 1,000. The levy, for those who keep track, the amount of tax that the village needs to raise is going up 4% to $970,633. That is on this sheet of comparative levy increases over time.
Were you able to reincorporate the AIM aid?
We did reincorporate the AIM aid, even though we don't know where it's actually going to be coming from. And I won't go line by line through the budget, but a couple of highlights I will mention. We did reincorporate the AIM aid. We used a little bit of fund balance carryover from last year. Our fund balance should stand, still in healthy shape, but we were able to use a little bit of it. We've estimated a slight, but not an aggressive increase in property, or I'm sorry, in sales tax. Receipts for the upcoming year based on Tompkins County's projections. We've allocated a little bit more to our earnings on, our interest earnings on reserve accounts due to some ability to access slightly better interest rates through CDs at the Trust Company. On the spending side, as we mentioned, payroll is the largest component as well as reserving. On the water side, again, I won't go through line by line, but both water rates and sewer rates will remain the same for the upcoming year as they did last year. So no change to water and sewer rates. You know, give Nancy and Jack a last chance.
Does Water and Sewer stay the same for our individual users as well?
Correct. And as we discussed previously, this is an aside, but there is a municipal rate available, which we had developed the framework for if that becomes a need. But the standard rate for outside individual users is still 8.5, one and a half times the inside village rate, which has not changed. It won't be changing in this cycle.
Is that general public comment?
Nope, not yet. Still budget. Still budget.
You know, it wasn't like it was sleeping.
Well, I move to close the public comment hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing on the 19-20 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion, unless there's any discussion by the board, to adopt the proposed 2019-2020 village budget.
Would move that we adopt the 19-20 budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
So this is my moment to just bring back the police full-time discussions. I think your point is well-taken, that, you know, our levy is increasing at a fairly predictable rate that outpaces our assessments. But I think this year in particular, we could have done better job of pushing that out and softening that blow. And while I think it's important to look at the big picture, it's equally important to look at the things that are directly in front of us and managed way that we handle those. And I think we could have done that better in this instance. But I'll leave it there. I've said far more than I need to say on that one, so I'll let it be.
Any other discussion?
I just want to point out that we had, it's not like we enjoyed the discussion. We did have multiple discussions around that. And we just ended up being opposing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I just disagree.
Understood. Understood.
Any additional discussion on the budget? Okay. Then all in favor of adopting the proposed 2019-2020 village budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Item number five, we have approval of minutes from the March 7th. I closed my laptop too soon, March 7th meeting.
So I move that we accept these minutes as presented. I did send Tammy one. I'm going to just pause there. I move that we accept them as presented. Second. I did send Tammy one grammatical change. It was, I think, an and to an at or something. I don't remember where it was.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the March 7th board meeting minutes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, item number six, Jack, you're up. Public comment period, privilege of the floor, and go.
Okay. Well, as I was saying before, outside of the scope of the budget, that a lot of public comment, whether it be allowed or just, you know, given to the public, which is an option for most of the boards, is not really taken seriously as an input of any value in that a board will do the mandatory if there's a public hearing or if there is a public comment, they will listen and then they will close a public comment, even if there's, you know, many good items that are brought up that would need further discussion. And they're not discussed. So basically, the public comment is ignored or just sloughed off. And if there's another agenda to be, you know, discussed, well, that's fine. But it doesn't have the public comment taken into consideration. I find that kind of, you know, disturbed.
So I think part of the difficulty there is that if you respond like I'm doing now, then those discussions tend to degenerate into a back-and-forth, and it becomes essentially debate. It's very easy to absorb all of the public comment time having a back-and-forth, which is why Rorden and Marty before him are very reserved in their responses. It's not, I think it appears to the public perhaps frequently that your comments are not heard or that they're not important because they aren't directly addressed. But it is important to note that they are taken seriously. I mean, it's an important role that you serve, and it's an important role for us as a board, and I'm sure for the other boards as well, to hear what the public has to say. That doesn't always mean that you can respond point for point or that you can address that particular issue that you're concerned about now, that we can address that in the board right now. But it is still very important. It is very much taken to heart, although it may not appear that way any chance.
Well, it may be taken to heart in some fashion, but during the meeting, after the public comment, as you say, there are some, you know, issues that would need further discussion that are not discussed before votes are taken on very important issues. And it's not so much a back-and-forth, but if a board hears something that may be relevant to a decision, it doesn't interfere with their, you know, marching forward and voting on an issue.
Right. I mean, I obviously can't speak to particular issues, particular instances. But in general, I think a lot of things get raised repeatedly that have been addressed before. A lot of things get raised that you can't address simplistically or that have been discussed. I regret the appearance of that, but it's difficult. I mean, even right now, just this back-and-forth, you know, it takes more time than it's...
No, I understand, but, you know, if it does take more time and things need to be, you know, examined more closely by the board, then they shouldn't vote on it immediately after the public comment is over. And that's basically what happens.
I would tell you that I have been on this board for a while, but I do know that there have been instances from public comment where we've delayed our response until the following meeting. I said that we need to discuss this and more and just didn't vote on it. Had discussions in between and voted on at the next meeting.
Well, I agree, and I said this board is better than the other boards in that respect. But if you had followed just, you know... But if you had followed just, you know, observationally, the the way meetings are run, you will see that instead of, you know, putting it off and discussing it further or studying it further and come up with your own opinion on it, they're just kind of sloughed off. And a vote on important matters happens anyway. Without, I mean, and there are serious matters brought up by the public and, you know, that merits consideration.
Well, I'll just say that I would hope that folks feel comfortable speaking to this board and that I hope that we've been responsive to a fault when asked questions over which this board has oversight. However, no one on this board should, and I certainly won't, comment about the workings of a meeting overseen by another board, because that would be, that would be inappropriate.
Well, that's understandable and I agree that this board is way more accepting of public comment and responding to it in a way that, you know, makes sense. You know, the other boards don't have to do that and you don't either. But it just seems like a lot of good ideas or thoughts or possible, you know, complications are not considered and they're voted on regardless. And there might be, you know, an advantage to having some time to think about it and discuss it and then vote on it, which doesn't seem to happen. So one other question is, this may sound a little strange and I don't mean to be accusatory, but if you see that some other boards are doing things that are contrary to state law and village law, is that just, you know, by the by and that's okay?
I have not seen any of our other two boards do anything contrary to village or state law.
Okay, well, the planning board did not take into consideration BEAKER or, you know, village environmental statement at all. There wasn't discussion.
That was addressed in the attorney's summary during the SEAKER. During the SEAKER.
Okay, but there was no discussion about the different thresholds for an economic impact statement?
That was addressed in the attorney's statement as well.
Well, but it wasn't discussed in any meaningful manner.
Well, that would be a board procedure then.
Well, okay, if you wanted to go technical on me, I'll say that that's a board procedure, but at the same time, you have a responsibility to look for yourself to see if there are certain, you know, statutes that are not being followed.
I have not seen any of the other two boards do anything contrary to village or state law.
Well, there's always an explanation by either the lawyer for the applicants, in this case, the 46 South Street, or by the village attorney that, you know, are taken at face value without, you know, diving in at all to what is being said and how it, you know, conforms. So as long as, you know, you don't see anything that's contrary, then I guess there's not much to be said. But if you do, would you, you know, consider doing some, taking some action on it?
Certainly. However, I will say that it is the nature of things that when we don't like the answer we hear, we tend to want to search for a different answer. So I want to separate very carefully the notion that either of the other two boards are breaking the law versus coming to conclusions that someone or someones don't like. And so I stand by my statement that I have not seen and I'm not aware of any instance where any of the other two boards have done anything contrary to village or state law.
Right. Okay, well, you know, it isn't always that somebody doesn't like the answer, but it's pretty clear when you read both the village and the state law, the statutes are, you know, black and white. And if that is okay and, you know, for whatever reason it's rationalized, well, that's what it is. But it's not just because you don't hear the results you want. I mean, there is some guidelines that are or are not being followed and they're, you know, state and village laws that kind of not just my opinion, not just the answer I don't like, but that are not really being followed. And I was just wondering if this board has any, you know, means of either correcting that or just, you know, taking the test.
If this board agreed with you, then perhaps there would be methodology to do that.
Okay, but there is none existing.
Is there a lawyer in that?
This, there, in the opinion, and I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I'll speak for myself as mayor. There is no evidence and I have not seen, nor am I aware of, any instance where any of the other two boards have done anything contrary to village or state law.
Okay, well, that's fair enough.
And if I'm correct, the only way we would have to address that shouldn't, if we felt that or saw that for that fact that would be to go through a legal proceeding just like anyone else that felt that there was something not being followed. We don't have any extra different sort of backhand or aroundabout sort of way of influencing that other than any other person who's involved in this process.
I understand that the village would have to, you know, go to where Martin was 78 if they thought that the boards were not, you know, complying with a law or ordinance or that.
I mean legitimately, legitimately, Jack, if our attorney, who is, who is contracted or who is chosen by this board, if our attorney felt that any of the other two boards were not following the law, our attorney would inform this board.
Okay, and then there would be some methodology to.
Because our attorney, you know, this isn't the movies, this isn't, this isn't some rogue attorney. Our attorney wouldn't want to represent someone breaking the law. However, it is possible for an attorney to say, this is what the law says and then have a board make a decision contrary to that. In which case that attorney's duty is to the village first. In which case the attorney would inform this board. He has not done so.
No. On this, I hate to keep coming back to this project, but on this project, the attorney is being essentially paid by the developer in so much as, you know, his fees are charged to the village and the village charged.
Ah, that's interesting. I hadn't thought of that tactic.
The developer to pay those, and that's all perfectly legal.
The developer is not paying our attorney. He is our attorney. We pay him. And the developer did not have to agree to reimburse us for costs. I would like to point out though, this is very interesting. I would like to point out though that there was a lot of very vehement complaining and pushback from some folks at the notion that we would be spending all of this money on our attorney to not be reimbursed. So I find it to be an interesting catch 22 that we're in now where if we don't get reimbursed for our legal costs, that that's somehow a negative. But now that we are being reimbursed for our village costs to our attorney, now the developer is paying the attorney. That's, that's very, very interesting.
Well, it's a catch 22, as you say, and it's perfectly the right of any board to ask for, you know, expert opinion. And certainly legal is an expert opinion. But in essence, as the money flows from the village to the attorney, in this instance, it's being paid by the developer. And I'm not saying there's any conflict of interest or that the decisions or advice of the attorney are being influenced by that. But it is kind of, you know, a gray area as far as, you know, basic loyalties.
Very interesting tech. It's actually, it's actually not a gray area at all. It's completely black and white. And I think the village is fortunate that we have one of the preeminent land use attorneys in the state on our side. And I will, you know, loyalty is a thin thing, but I'm very glad that he is, he is our village attorney. And I look forward to working with him in the future.
Well, that, you know, I'm not saying that he is, you know, corrupt in any way. I'm just saying that, you know, there is a line that is not necessarily crossed, but it's definitely followable and you can see.
So I think if you, if you look for a conspiracy, there's a conspiracy, Jack. In this case, it's, it's quite clear that he works for us.
No, I think it's totally legal.
No, I understand. It's, guy is a spectacular attorney. We are lucky to have him.
I think the way to think of it is this.
His loyalties are clear, his ethics are established.
It seems accurate to me. I'd have to double check this, but it seems that we're actually on the hook for his pay, right? Should, you know, the applicant bond are off and refuse to pay us, we still have to pay him. So it's not that they are paying him or just some sort of contract. We are paying and we are getting reimbursed, but there is very clear contract that we are the ones paying and we would still be on the hook for that.
Well, I agree. I mean, you're the entity that pays the lawyer because he is the village lawyer. And you're reimbursed at the, at the grace of whoever is developing that agrees to pay that. And there's no necessity or legal point to do that. It's just, I think we've done that one. I just have one other little question. Is Steph Bailey the alternate on the planning board?
Just, just appointed, yes.
Okay, and she's also on the revision of the comp.
Comp plan zoning revision committee, yes.
So it's kind of like stacking up the planning board with people that are on both boards in a way. You know, it's not stacking up, it's just an alternate and, you know, just saying that it might be a tendency to kind of, you know, have the same people doing a very similar operation with different consequences and results.
It could seem that way. I think it's a result of the fact that no one has volunteered to sit on either the planning or zoning board. It is frankly pulling teeth to try to get someone to sit on either of those boards, particularly in the current environment. I know that we've asked three or four different people if they would like to be an alternate on the ZBA. And all of them have basically in no uncertain terms told us what we can go do with ourselves. So I think it's, it's the nature of volunteer involvement that the people who want to volunteer, volunteer for a lot of things. In the case of Steph, I'm particularly interested in having her on the planning board because she plans to, obviously, we know life happens. We never know what tomorrow brings. But she intends to put down roots here and stay here for some time to come. So I'm interested in having her perspective as someone who wants to be here as opposed to, maybe, maybe others who might retire and move or what have you. Not that their perspectives don't count, but when we're looking at comp plan zoning revision, when we have this 25-year vision, we're looking a long way out and the planning board is a, will be an integral part of that. So I'm glad, I'm glad she said yes.
A longevity component to remember as far as life span. But, you know, looking at 20 years out, not everybody on that board is going to be the same member as they are now.
Sure, certainly.
So for whatever reason, you know, people come and go from the boards. I've never been asked to serve on a board. I didn't know that there was a list of volunteers. I did apply to be the zoning officer, but I haven't reapply. So if there's still vacancy, I'll reapply. I don't know exactly.
For the boards or for the zoning officers?
For the zoning officers.
But not the boards?
What?
But not the boards?
No, I do boards. I just didn't know that there was kind of a list of volunteers that would be willing to, you know, work on a board if there is.
It's a very short list.
And four of them are even shorter. Who said they wanted?
Those were attempts. They weren't even on the board.
Sorry, no. They were just like, you know, not picked out of a hat, possibly handed it. Anyway, I think, you know, probably done a lot of bad work from here out of the business, so. I think I probably said what I need or want or whatever. And the response has been very good and I appreciate that, you know, this board actually responds.
And at that point, I would just say, you know, I think we've tried to offer a variety of communications outlets so people have questions, you know, that can utilize some of these questions. Very good questions that could go to the Ask the Mayor section of our website and be publicly presented or on our Facebook page. I just really hope we'll be very careful about how we sow these seeds of doubt and critique in, you know, these systems and these volunteers, the people that represent this community. Because, you know, in these times of comment threads and, you know, instant emotional reactions to things, they can snowball very quickly. And I think that would be a great disservice to a lot of people that give up a lot of time for low to little pay. So I think, I just hope we'll, you know, appreciate you coming in and bringing these questions to us in person. But I just hope we'll be very careful in how we, you know, paint things as being gray areas or, you know, I trust his integrity, but do I really trust his integrity? I don't know. You know, so those kind of things, you know, can, can create little threads that, you know, unravel quickly. So I just hope we'll be very responsible with that.
Right, well, I have never posted anything about any of these municipal issues, so it's called ignorant, but, you know, sometimes I read what's going on. But personally, I don't feel a need to contribute to that discussion that may be going on online because it's all, that's what it is. It's, you know, it's, you can say anything and it needs to be true. So I kind of abstain from doing that, but I'm not unaware that it goes on. And it's good to have another forum and, you know, Ask the Mayor is probably a very good one. You know, there's a minority of people that follow any of this. And to be honest, I haven't much of my tenure here as a resident because, you know, there's a sense of trust that there's a government that's doing the right thing. And I noticed it during this 30-year period. They have, you know, or if they haven't, I didn't I wasn't directly, you know, affected. But so I'm just following things much closer now. And pretty much that's how I became aware of, you know, coming to meetings and this and that. For whatever reason, it's kind of interesting that the way things work. And it it's been enlightening.
Good. All right, item number seven is Nancy's turn.
Well, I can be brief. I would really want to start with a very enthusiastic thank you to the village for the help you've been providing in this team effort to make the Salo Habitat a little more accessible to people. And I just, I just prepared this for our little Salo Advisory Committee. But I just want to pass around sort of the before and progress. We're not 100% done yet, but so this is what it looked like when we just put up the sign. This was the schematic of what was intended to be a three-car little parking area. And then on the back, we have, and I can also miss, but the village helped scrape it off. The town provided the stone. It got spread around. the town provided the stone, it got spread around, we got to still tweak that a little bit, but, well, really, it was really nice. It's not surprising, I know our town and village, you know, your DPW and our town highway guys worked together well all year round, and sort of seeing that action was just really nice. So it was, since there were two nice days in a row last week, and sort of the work schedule could accommodate it, we apparently created a training opportunity for one of your new DPW guys with the backhoe, and, but it was great. I mean, we couldn't beat that with the collaboration, so thank you for that. The second thing is that actually I think is a town action that won't directly affect you, but will be of interest to you. Tomorrow night, we're having at our town board meeting, a public hearing to seek input on a local law that we are considering, that picks up from, it's a property tax exemption that the county has approved, and the other municipalities are allowed to do a property tax exemption that allows us to, where we agree to support affordable housing, to accept a lower than market rate assessment on properties that are owned by, or in a housing trust. So, think neighborhood housing. They're about to, presuming, you know, if the plan goes forward, they would be, they hope to sell some of their homes at market rate. But to keep those homes affordable, actually, unfortunately, what their price points are, but they want to be able to sell a home to somebody that's at an affordable price. They want also to allow whoever buys that to sell it at some point in the future and realize some profit. But they won't be allowed, because of the subsidies and the agreements in that program, to have, you know, if I today bought one of those houses, and in seven years, you know, the market had gone up 10%, to keep that price affordable, INHS would say to me, you can, you know, have your house, your assessed value approved, you know, increasingly 2% a year, I'm not sure if they've got a fixed percentage. But, so when you go to sell, you can capture that degree of profit, but not make a killing if the demand is such that you could get a lot more. And so what that, what it means for the town is, our assessment department, if we get this exemption, it says to the assessment department, go ahead and value those properties at sort of, according to the rules of the housing trust fund. So, if this year is $100,000, and next year the market rate would be $110,000, but INHS to keep it affordable says really only $102,000, will agree to $102,000 of assessed value and tax on that lower amount, rather than capitalizing on the full amount. So, so we are, we have, the county's already done this, it gives permission to other municipalities who are not required to, what we're choosing, to take this up. I've not heard any of my fellow board members speak against it, and so I think it's likely to pass or whatever in a public hearing, and that will put us on record as being willing at some point in the future, if there are homes that are in this kind of situation, we would agree to accept 98% of the full valuation, or whatever it is. And in my mind, that's 98% more than we had, so we're good. But that's, there is, I think the wording of that is probably on our, on our website, but I'd be happy to share that with you. One of the questions that came up from our town board as we looked at this in the initial stages was, well, what if, you know, Joe Smith buys one of these houses? But Joe Smith decides to rent it at a much higher rate, the going rate, to somebody, and they make a killing even though they're paying less tax and blah, blah, blah. Well, that's really not allowed, it really didn't, it's intended to be owner occupied. And so, our attorney's done a little bit, you know, filed the, you know, part of the law that this relates to, and we have a resolution that will, that we think we're going to take up tomorrow night, and probably will pass, but because, but each taxing authority has the ability to decide or not to decide, to enter into, to provide that exemption. So you as a village and school, you know, will, you can do it, you cannot do it, you can, however you proceed, but we're proceeding.
So, when you say it's for affordable housing, are there specific organizations that you would support, say those are affordable housing, are they specific? I mean, does it have to be effectively accredited?
Yeah, there is some definition about sort of what a housing trust.
It's defined in, sorry, it's defined in real property, New York State real property law, who qualifies to be an individual.
Yeah, and locally, I mean, maybe others, but locally, sort of neighborhood housing is sort of the main one that enters into these agreements, so, but yes, it's not just an individual landlord, you know, owner who says, I want to make my house affordable, therefore I'd like to pay less tax on it, it would be part of that, to proceed. So, thinking, and, and we also are continuing along in our sort of interminable zoning process, so it continues.
If you consider a copy of the tax, the property tax law, or I'd appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, what I actually did was tonight, I wasn't entirely sure who a key contact person for affordable TBR, but I know this is the kind of thing that some of those folks is there still active, you know, might be interested in, but yes, I, so I sent it out to say, sort of say, you know, there is a hearing, it's last minute, but I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Or just, or do you want to just, or just send it out?
I, I've read the real property law, so I'm familiar with it, but sure, if you want to send it along, then pass it along the chain.
I'm sure it'll come before us at some point, so I'm interested to see how you adjust to their.
Right, and somebody's going to ask you, or you could take, you know, nobody's actually come to us and said, why do you do this? We just sort of heard about the tax exemptions that are allowable, and it seemed like one that we were willing to consider.
Any, any questions for Nancy?
It was a very nice celebration, it was.
Yes.
It's our country in general.
Did you, did you stay till the end?
I don't know. I will say publicly, I did stay at 10:15 during the bathroom break.
That's just kidding.
That's kidding, I really enjoyed it, but there were so many people who had so many wonderful things to say about that, that I know it could go on longer than that. So I didn't get to see the video.
Yeah, me too. Well, Julia, your timing is pretty good.
Good timing, yeah?
Yes, it is.
Awesome.
Because you're up whenever you're ready.
Great. So I wanted to come here today to discuss an exciting new relationship that the farmer's market and the village can begin, as far as SNAP purchases are concerned at the market. It's, I think, something really important to offer to our community, to allow EBT customers to have a healthier option at the market. So in the past, we've been working with the Cooperative Extension, and have had a checking account with them in order to facilitate these purchases, but unfortunately, it wasn't, they couldn't continue doing that. They were going to different markets using the same printer, and basically they were pulled us out midway through last year, which wasn't great for our customers, because cutting off sales halfway through the season, it hurts not only the market, but again, people's access to these products. So, this year, I'm hoping to have the village open up a separate checking account that can allow customers to make these purchases. So I hope I print it out enough, I printed out a couple.
We can share it.
This is just going to be the upfront cost, so to confirm this, everything is going to be reimbursed at the end of the year, but there are a couple upfront costs, which the treasurer for the farmer's market has confirmed all of this being within our budget. So, there's going to be an annual fee to be part of the program, which is basically a phone app that you be part of, that I'll use through my phone to be able to make the transactions happen. And it's 15 cents per SNAP transaction, and this will be charged monthly out of the account. The interesting thing too with this program, you can use just regular credit and debit cards as well to do transactions. So we'd get wooden tokens that you'd give to people for the market, and it wouldn't just be EBT customers, it could be anybody who doesn't want to go to the ATM. They can come in and do credit card instead of just using cash, and then it's a very specific token that has the market's name, so it can't be transferred anywhere. It's a three-year commitment, and after the three years, then if you were to back out, there is a cancellation fee for that, and it gets lower every year. After the third year, you could back out. But this particular program, it's partnered with Square, which, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Square, but it's used with a lot of businesses. The company's Novo Dia, but they're working, partnered with Square to make the software. And basically, it's being backed by the Farmer's Market Federation. I'm working with Diane Egert, who is the executive director for the Farmer's Market Federation, to get the application going, but we wanted to see if the village would be willing to work with the Farmer's Market on this.
So the village would be signing a contract with the vendor, correct?
Yes, so Vicki and I spoke that it would probably be heard, they need some information, some personal information to get the application approved.
And the annual payments that are reimbursed, this will be reimbursed to the village from the Farmer's Market?
Yes.
It would be reimbursed through this program back to?
Into the checking account.
Yeah.
And then?
And I think the idea is for the money, the initial payments to come from the Farmer's Market budget.
Right, exactly.
So, I go to the Farmer's Market, I buy something, I swipe. My credit card is charged, the money goes into the village's new checking account.
Right.
And then the village is now dispersing to the vendors, who are now owed whatever I paid for?
Yes, so.
Who is doing that accounting?
So what happens, they receive these wooden tokens, and then increments over to $1, and then $5, $1 for the EBT customers and $5 for credit card transactions. They put them in an envelope at the end of the market day and give them to the market manager.
This is the Farmer's Market vendor?
The vendor gives it to the manager. So I collect all the tokens at the end of the week, and then at other farmer's markets, it's been either like two, two times a month or monthly, probably would do it monthly that they get a check for the amount that they were given, yep.
These tokens are brought to the village office?
No, I, I would keep, like, you need to do monthly filing with the federation too, and I would probably just, you'd just keep the tokens and redistribute them, but that's would be how I could record who had the purchases.
Okay. But you would bring me some sort of spreadsheet?
Exactly, yep.
So the transaction fees, are they added on top of the customer charge?
So, not for EBT recipients, but that is reimbursed. So every 15 cents, every time a SNAP customer purchases something, it gets charged 15 cents, that is part of the reimbursement at the end of the year, not for credit card, regular credit cards. That would be something that the customer would pay a percentage to make up, so it wouldn't, it would, we wouldn't be getting, like, losing that cost.
No, but I'm thinking about the transaction fees, MasterCard, dollar sign, monthly. That number confuses me, because that seems awfully low for a monthly fee for anyone.
I think that maybe they, when I was talking to Diane, I think that's like the percent per, like, transaction, and that they, maybe she miswrote that when she said monthly, but it's, I think, 2.9% like of your, the charge. So we would just charge, if they were using Visa, you would charge them 2.9% to get the tokens.
I have called her because she wants some information.
Do we have a copy of the contract?
Not yet, because she wants like my social security number, some personal information that I just wasn't comfortable with sending over email, so I wanted to talk to her.
She needs your personal information?
I, I've heard of the application.
I think it's kind of like, we could fill out the credit card, you know, we fill those credit card applications, we have to give them our personal information, our.
The reason why they ask for such personal information is because they want to make sure that you haven't had any, I guess, indiscretions with using EBT in the past, is what I was told. So that's why they have designated person look into that.
And I didn't realize that it was a contract, that it was, so if you need to sign the contract, then it would have to be your information. I thought it was just, since I was going to do the checking account and I was going to make the payment, that I thought, I got my stuff.
So I know, so I'm familiar with it. I know that in the private sector, they usually want an individual's information, because they act as guarantor. But as a municipality, we just won't do that. There's just, if, if the contract requires a municipal official to act as, as a guarantor of the contract, then we're not going to be able to do this.
Okay.
Municipates didn't require it. It's one of the few perks of government that we, we're just, we're just not going to do that. But I would be interested in seeing the contract.
Okay.
If we can get a hold of it. I would rather her send you the application, the contract, before you give her all your personal information.
Okay. I'll get ahold of it, I'll take care of this.
Okay.
Because the reality is, we don't need the credit card processing. Maybe the Farmer's Market would like it. The EBT is, SNAP program is worthwhile, but I don't, I don't see us entering into some kind of a contract that's, well, I don't, I don't prejudge what the contract says.
Let's, let's see what it is. We had talked previously, the credit card thing was kind of a value add. If we, if it becomes complicated, it's not useful. If it's easy enough, it'd be nice to have.
Yeah.
Well, can't, can't individual vendor have their own?
And they sure.
They, they, they can. I guess the main reason for doing this whole program to begin with is for the EBT customers. So the credit card transactions, just since the software's already built in, it's, it's something that's nice that you can offer to customers, although it's not required, but really we want to be able to reach that group of individuals who are underrepresented, so they can access.
The village can handle that without very leading personal credit cards up to the actual vendors.
Right.
Yeah, if, if it gets too complicated, the credit card thing, we absolutely should. It's just one of the, it's already there. If it's just another checkbox or something, then let's, let's do it.
So, I, I guess, I know I'm confused, because I thought it was the whole thing that we had to, you know, sign this contract. But we don't have to accept the credit card part, we can just do the EBT part?
I'm not sure about that.
I think we'll have to see what that contract looks like. My impression is similar to yours, and I don't, I think it sounds like it's kind of all one big bucket, and I don't think it's any different really.
And you can't do one and not the other?
I suppose there's your questions to ask.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to have to learn.
And I imagine they're not super familiar with working with municipalities, so it's just going to be some back and forth. I mean, I think it's set up for, like, a market manager to personally run, right, versus municipality, so there'll just be some figuring it out.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll get ahold of her.
Awesome.
What's?
Well, I don't, and that's why I wanted to talk to her first.
Especially for those phone calls, more random cell number.
Yeah.
What's the Farmer's Market's first date?
May. And I was told that we couldn't even apply until a month before the first market, so it's just, we're right, we're getting to that point, yeah.
Well, you called her today.
Oh, great, thank you.
But I did not hear from her.
Right, so I think we need to see the, the contract, and then we can usually review it pretty quickly. If it's workable, then, then I think we can try to move forward with it.
I mean, it's worth doing that.
You gave me her email, so what I'll do is, I'll email her and I'll CC her, so any response will go directly to me.
Another aspect, if we can get over this hurdle, is there's a, it's called Double Up Foodbox, it's a nonprofit that started in Michigan, moved over to northwest New York, but they're accepting applications. but they're accepting applications all over. And it would allow our market to match EBT sales. So if somebody who comes and spends ten dollars on their card, we would give them twenty dollars in tokens. And it would be no additional cost to us, but it would just, yeah, it's like, I guess, they're working with some sort of grant or something that allow that to happen, which could be amazing for people.
Sure, okay.
Be interested to know more about the token system, it just seems like people...
Well, just simplify your account, right?
Right, yeah.
These wooden tokens will be around, so I don't know.
It's a, it's a...
It's can't be all right, that's why. It's a different, Double Up one. I don't think that they're asking as much personal information or anything like that for it. Yep, the application then?
For this Double Up?
Yes.
You can forward to me?
Yeah, sure.
Can I see it?
Sure.
So we do have a resolution in Dropbox to authorize Vicki to open a checking account. I think we should still authorize her to, and then we can do that if we need to. But I'm opening a kind of conversation around that. Assuming that we can work this out, we'll just get open up a credit card, or a checking account to associate it with. Alternatively, we can wait till May.
Yeah, my leaning would be to wait till May. Just 'cause if it doesn't work out, then now we've gotta close the checking, it's just...
Oh, I guess I didn't know.
I think to open the checking account's easy enough, trust company's pretty good about it.
Fair enough. I didn't know if authorizing it allowed Vicki to not do it until we actually needed it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I can do it whenever.
And also, wouldn't you be able to sign this contract without board approval? In the interim, so that if this can happen mid-month without our meeting?
That's kind of what I'm thinking. The only thing that's holding up is a checking account. We might as well authorize Vicki to open it if we, if things can kind of progress over the month without us needing to...
The board would have to authorize me to sign the contract ahead of time, but I'm not overly comfortable with that, since we haven't seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
The checking account is kind of a...
So it's kind of not, yeah, if, if we need to authorize you to sign that agreement, then it is really a difference. Okay, we'll hold off on that then.
It takes thirty seconds.
Trust company will be the easy part.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
So we'll wait to see what we get from the company with the contract information, and we'll go from there.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, you know, trans, definitely, it's a bit of a math.
We're gonna have to completely rethink the old saying about not taking wooden dick.
Yeah, apparently, no, it's just, it's a very Christian system. Wooden dollar check, fine, right?
Yes.
No, I'll get a wooden.
We were, I remembered that.
Okay, item number eight on the agenda is reports from board members, starting with Fire, CPZR, and hey, Farmers Market.
Yeah, so that was the Farmers Market. Let's see, on the Fire end, as Nancy mentioned, we had a great event over the weekend on Saturday for the, for the year, for the Fire Department, as well as celebrating Jack, Jack Fulton's fifty years of service, which is phenomenal record, a date to mark. I do have a Fire report for, oops, that's not what I wanted to do, for, for the month. I'll read off briefly. So there were twelve calls to the Village of Truensburg, twenty to the town of Ulysses, three to the town of Covert, two to the town of Hector, and two for Mid-July, for a total of thirty-nine calls in March. There was eighty-eight training hours, seventy-six Fire rescue hours, for a total of one hundred and sixty-four service hours. So that's in Dropbox as well, if you can see that. That's it for Fire. On the CPZR side, we had our first meeting with EDR, our contractor and our consultant for the project, the process. As a productive meeting, kind of talked a picture about what we're planning on doing for, we're kind of here on out. Our next meeting is this Thursday at six-thirty in this room. We are still going back and forth, but we'll do kind of a group tour with EDR, kind of walk around and show them different sections of the village, and kind of the look and feel of what we've got here. Or kind of dig in a little deeper on our outreach plan that we're working with them, that's been posted on the, a draft that's been posted on the website. And continue to kind of walk through our current plan, what's in there, what parts we think need provision, or additional pieces we wanted to add in. So we've kind of started a list so far of topics we would like to see, that are currently covered in the comp plan, that we'd like to kind of add in. Most of what's going on with CPZR. And one other piece that doesn't fall under these buckets, but we've submitted an application to be deemed a clean energy community. The recent work with replacing all these lights as LEDs, it all looks very fine. No concerns that I've heard yet. And that's enough to get us over the hump for an energy reduction part of that submission. So that's been submitted, and we're just kind of waiting to hear back. And hear if we've done it in time to capture a bit of the Grand Light List associated with that, or if it's all kind of been run out, but we'll find out as we, as we hear back.
What do you anticipate the grant for?
It'll be five thousand if, if the money's still there.
So I, you know, I can...
Yeah, sure. And, and I'll let you know what's I can worry about.
Okay.
What's going on there? I think that is it on the internal business.
Great, anything, any questions for Ben?
Just curious if any regarding the CPZR, any, any themes coming out of that? Any kind of, I don't know, if that's where you're at yet, that's what the consultants would hope with?
Say exactly yet, we really kind of only in earnest had one meeting, to be honest. Like now that we've picked our consultant, kind of sat down with him. A lot of that was, like I said, kind of finding topics, transportation being one that's not talked about, for instance. But, you know, we'd like to think about, especially as we look at different modes of transportation, how people are using cars and ride-share services differently. We've now got blind mic, we've got the bus supply, and like thinking about transportation more broadly, and what that does for the village. So we've kind of started to highlight some key topics we'd like to drill into, but we haven't really gone deep, more deeply than that. I don't think there's any particular top-level themes. It's been kind of a hodgepodge of different things that have come up that we'd like to dig into. I think what we'll start focusing on this week is, is a combination of really kind of identifying what's unique about Truensburg, so they get a better feel of what our communities look like. What is Tanarak and Larchmont look like versus Wake Street versus Washington versus Prospect? You know, kind of hit the high, and the main street, you know, kind of key into some highlights of what, what we have here, so they can kind of start getting a sense of, you know, just what are the, even though we're such a small area, we have a variety of different fields in the village, so we have respect those. And then just starting to work on our outreach plan, and what does that look like? Who are the stakeholders, who are we gonna wanna make sure we're really reaching out to? There'll be definitely larger conversations, probably at the Fire Hall and maybe at the school. There'll be probably somewhat smaller kind of group meetings, and just kind of planning that out. And so they've proposed a draft to us that, as I said, is up on the website. And we'll kind of continue to tweak that and play around with that.
Thanks, great.
All right, EMS youth in STACK.
So we met at our last Youth Commission meeting, we met the new director of the county's county services, who's Kate Schenksky. And we didn't talk much with her, she's, she sat in on one of our meetings mostly, but... We discussed doing a needs assessment for youth recreation in the town and the village, which is something that I'm hoping to discuss more with the four boards group, and see what, what T-Bird Rec has done in that vein. See if they have anything, you know, that's official other than, I'm not really sure. Their, their needs assessment, in quotes, has been sort of a, you know, word-of-mouth thing, or if they had an official, I don't know, I'm sort of interested to explore that more. We also, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I'll mention it again. The town has declared, or proclaimed, I should say, Durand Day, or was it the twenty-first?
We haven't yet, we, we hope to...
Or you, you shall. Was it the twenty-first that you...
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, May twenty-ninth. I had, I think at the last meeting, said that the best thing would be maybe to give him an award.
A car annual award?
Right. But I haven't thought about it a little bit since then, it seems kind of, I don't know, a little bit strange to not also join in on this. I mean, Durant has been, and he's served the village for twenty years almost, and he really is fairly exceptional. So I think it would be appropriate to do that. I don't know if people would feel comfortable with a resolution, or if it's something as simple as just, you know, my verbal resolution right now. But are thoughts on, on moving in that direction, or?
I think a written resolution would be nice, especially if we can get a couple of informational wherestases about the man for anyone who might not know him.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'll write it. Next, thirty seconds.
Well, you talking about May twenty-ninth? And I think we can do it in our May meeting.
Right, aren't you gonna present something, though, wasn't there, so the May meeting would be all right?
Yeah, I would, yeah. Our proposal is that to introduce sort of a resolution that also proclaims the twenty-ninth a special day, and the twenty-ninth would be an event at the Farmers Market, to which the public is invited. This is what the Youth Commission's sort of work has been to plan. So the, I have a draft of a resolution that we're planning to do, and I'm happy to share it with you, if you wanna take over the venue, you have it?
I do have it, yeah.
I mean, but you can, you know, it's a village, isn't it?
Take over the...
And it would be an appropriate day to present a, an award from the village, too, right?
We would like to do that, yeah, I wasn't sure about the timing. I couldn't remember when you did the robotics.
So around July or August.
Yeah, I was remembering it was summer, but...
Mid to late summer.
I don't, I don't know that that...
I mean, it's how many exceptional people do you have a year? I mean, do we have to wait to make sure that it's a certain kind of year?
Everyone deserves a trophy, Jack. Yeah, I mean, that would be great, that would be really ideal, I think, to present, present the award at the same time. All right, so I'll, I'll look, I assume we'll just use what, or something very similar to what Nancy wrote. But I'll come up with something in forward about for the next meeting.
Okay.
Not much on EMS, I think we'll probably have more on EMS. Although we did do some interviews that we can talk about in executive session. For the tree committee, we did decide on a date, I believe I said this at the last meeting, but we'll also say it again, May sixth. We are public date to discuss the tree law and trees in the village in general. I am hopefully gonna do a press release or something along those lines in the next couple of days to push that out and hopefully boost attendance. But to know anyone who is even marginally interested in trees, it would be great if they came. Jack?
I love trees.
That's what I thought. And then I went out this morning, I've been sick since Thursday. This morning was my first good day. Note that it is limited to this morning. This afternoon was a different thing altogether. But anyway, we went out with David Allen and Karen Powers and I, and looked at tree placements, or the oaks I mentioned in our last meeting. And we have staked out some places that I think will be great. The one thing I want to point out, well, first of all, obviously, those things need to be approved by this board, because those are fairly permanent adjustments to the fabric of the village, I think, or at least potentially. But I, we had hoped to position them to basically frame the gateways, the two-twenty-seven and west ninety-six gateways to the village. So there's the fairgrounds, and then those are the two other sort of main arteries. So that had been our initial hope. But then realized the ninety-six, it's sort of border, borders all this property. There's an awkward spot where there's a power line and not very much room. So if we ever put a sidewalk in there, that it's just not really feasible. So we moved that into the, the spot across from the Farmers Market, which I initially sort of approved, because I thought we always start about apartment lot. But I believe that there's enough space there to go along the road, with enough setback that any room for apartment lot is still, is still very much a viable idea. So the, our plan, obviously subject to this board's approval, would be three trees there, and then one at the nearest corner on, so if you're driving out two-twenty-seven, the water tower's on your left, the very nearest corner of the village property there, there is a dead sugar maple tree. So we would remove that and put in an oak in roughly the same spot. And then I'm hoping to work on the, the county grant money to rebor, rebuild that sidewalk, trail, trees, sort of tour. But those are the spots, they're state of the mark, so if you wanna look at them, that'd be, that'd be great. Or any other suggestions? I mean, at this point, the, the tree committee's fairly, you know, feels good about those spots, but...
Yeah, I mean, unless anyone else has a strong feeling about it. Otherwise, I'm happy to go with Yor's and Dave's and Karen's.
Yeah.
Best suggestion.
I don't think I have much to add to that.
Yeah, but it's great. There's really not much they could be, I feel really very good about it. I mean, the, the one gamble is that we have no idea, really. These are hybrid oaks that are designed specifically to be hardy to the conditions near a road. So like compacted soil and salty, and just the worst conditions for a tree. But they're all kind of experimental trees. So we don't know what they're like mature growth at it. You know, we don't know what they're going to look like exactly. So it will be a little bit of a, a little bit of a gamble, but I mean, they are, you know...
Will they grow a dark green?
I mean, we can hope, right? Fingers crossed. Oh, man, that would be...
No, that's good.
Keiberg's on the map. And then, so the other thing I wanted to bring up is there's a couple of things that I'd like to buy for that tree committee to do tree assessments, like little things, just like tape measuring and stuff. And there is no line item to put that on in the budget. But there is our, the boards contingency, at least for this year. I thought for some of those little things, I would, I would put it there, but I wanted to check it and make sure that that's all right.
I believe we can put that through the gratification grant. I think the, the trees that you're purchasing, the stuff?
Those are not, well, they're, I guess they are being purchased, they're fifty dollars or something.
Right, we can put it through the gratification grant.
What, which gratification?
The one that we get, we, we have to, once we do this, that's what I do with Katie Terry Keiberg, and the flowers on the porch, and all that stuff. The corner of the court that it's sent you.
Yeah, put it through there, one of the contractual lines. So you get what you need, just make sure it's before juggling.
Right.
That's, that's... But that correct was for the board, you have a five.
Not for the inject... Manicure, pedicure.
That's harsh.
Is it covered by tailing bill? It's not, it's not covered by tailing bill?
Yeah. But the new person that's doing this is really into this whole gratification.
Okay, let's see if we can get it back from there.
Yep, I'm pretty sure we can.
Okay, anything else for Ben? All right, DPW Water Sewer Deb.
This is gonna be really short. I'd like to declare the International Dump Truck of No Further Use. The nineteen eighty-five.
That's a motion in a second. A motion in a second, any discussion?
That is my one.
You're trying to accentuate the national joke, don't fail.
How old is it?
Nineteen eighty-five.
Ben's vintage.
Yeah, that's it.
Ben's, is that when you were born?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Oh my God, oh my God.
Ben's like, that was just yesterday. All right, we have a motion in the second to declare the DPW's International Dump Truck of No Further Use. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you. Don't it?
If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
And I'm gonna leave DPW with that.
All right, Water Sewer?
Done.
Okay, Police, TACC.
Uh, start with Police. Interviewed a few potential new hires today, I think we'll talk about those in executive session, and then we'll discuss the hiring of them. Police report for March, two-hundred-and-eighteen calls for service, ten of which were of the criminal investigation nature, five domestic disputes, three... Ten of which were of the criminal investigation nature, five domestics disputes, three harassment, one thefts larceny, one trespassing. Non-criminal investigation, thirty-two officer, VNT, five suspicious incident area checks, five welfare checks, four animal problems, fourteen parking problems, complaints and five property accidents. Slash crashes. What's that?
Car accident.
Yes, I was thinking that too. No serious matters to report during the first three months of the new calendar year, so now with March done, I will do an updated quarterly report. But during the first three months of the calendar year, there has been an increase in our caseload and calls for service from four hundred and eighty-eight to six hundred and forty-three for the same time period of the previous calendar year.
Wow.
Uh, the increase is due to the implementation of two full-time officers, which has given the police presence a greater police presence, says Chief Joe Nelson.
Two hundred.
His words.
That's a lot.
Other updates, Mackenzie Covert, one of our full-time officers is in the process of taking a grant writing course, which is something we talked about, prioritizing more, the right for grants to offset costs. There's a few already, I think, in our queue, one of which is to potentially get reimbursement for bike riding, an officer, an officer bike, so we're hoping to probably see officer, at least one officer biking more around the village as part of their beat. Ben Wright, our other full-time officer, probably a month, month and a half ago now, created the Truman'sburg Police Facebook page, which I'm an admin on with him, and quickly has over three hundred followers, and he's been really, I think, exceptional at posting information, answering questions, he's an admin, asks you all the questions, coming to the page via direct message and our public, and we get quite a few and he's very quick to respond to them, so I'm pretty impressed with his, his social chops in that regard and people have been engaging quite a bit with that page. He's kind of, he's kind of done some fun things, posting laws that people might not know, as a way to kind of help educate.
Is that how the food dog stuff went?
Uh, there's been some of that, we talked about some of that. And, so between, you know, I think Matt, Matt doing the grant writing and Ben taking on an active role with kind of being a public information officer as well, and just some, I think, early, early returns on kind of being fully ingrained in the department and the community. I'm going to be doing a ride-along with Ben, Chief Joe has said it's cool to do a ride-along with Ben and make a video like I did with Dusty, if you saw that, so we're gonna kind of do another one of those and try to keep those coming so people get a little more insight into the officer and kind of what the day-to-day is, it's not gonna be like cops, I'm not gonna be chasing people with my phone or anything, it's just gonna be more about getting to know you with the officer and, you know, kind of what it's been like to patrol Truman'sburg. In this next year, hopefully soon, I'm also gonna try to put some more time into helping with the creation of a new website for the police department.
I would suggest that you update the existing Truman'sburg site as well, it says we have sixteen part-time officers.
Oh, okay.
It's the first line.
Kind of forget the rest.
Yeah.
Existing, good point, thank you.
That's, that's the one on the true, the village website, they're like sub-page for police.
TACC, a lot of continued discussions on shared services, obviously, especially emergency response. I think we've talked about it a lot as a village, but you know, all across the state and probably the country, you're constantly seeing articles popping up more and more about the cost of some of these important services, emergency response services that are getting harder and harder for municipalities to handle, so there's gonna be a kind of a breakout discussion about shared services with myself and some other county officials, it's kind of a break, TACC to talk more about that. Moving on to Chamber business, Porch Fest twenty nineteen has been announced. So signups are currently available for bands and people that want to host bands on their porch. I think this is third year now and it's been, it's growing nicely, hopefully we get as, get the same weather we got last year.
When's the video?
June fifteenth, I believe, is that, summer? Fifteenth, I think, Saturday the fifteenth?
Near moments.
It's not the fifteenth, it's probably within a day of that.
Fifteen is a day.
Okay, that's the day. Grass would schedule is announced today, so take a look, get excited, unless you're making figures. Talked with Chamber about, I'm kind of gonna help them probably a little bit more with social media, maybe do some videos about local businesses, try to put my, some of my skills there to use on behalf of giving a greater look at some of our local businesses, getting them out on the Chamber's social channels. And then continuing to talk with, looking at ways to, as we've discussed, pro-speed on Main Street. And that's, that's it for me.
Questions for Keith?
Okay. On your police report, when you summarize the quarterly statistics, will there be a breakout of responses in the town?
Uh, as in, the type of call in the town or how many went to the town?
Both, if we can get it.
Okay. I think, I think we can get that. I know we can get how many went to the town, I don't know if we've ever looked at town-specific calls, but I'm sure that's a full breakdown. We know.
Thank you.
Okay, Treasurer, Vicki.
I have been working a lot with the farmer's market treasurer and Julia, trying to, because they're all new and trying to lead them through the process of how budgets go and all that, and so far, so good. I went to a training about a week ago, but I probably won't go back because it pertains to a lot of counties and towns and they do things a lot differently than we do and I was by far the smallest village there, their villages are big and, you know. So, it, I mean, I'm not that I didn't learn anything, I learned some, you know, met new people and that kind of thing, but I really think that nine towns is probably a little better suited to our village.
Who's running that one?
The state GFOA, it's strictly finance, so, but with, with, it, it's majority of towns and, towns and, and towns and schools. So, and they were talking about things that I had, I had never heard of before. So, but, I think you have to do it once to say. End of year is coming, so we'll start on budget modifications and looking at all that to get ready. You know, it just seems like the office is very busy, probably baseball registration, summer rec registrations that they're coming in. So, I think, oh, Tom will be back in two days, if anybody's looking for him, I think he'll be back in the village. I, I think that's about it, yeah.
Any questions for Vicki?
How many, much, curious, how much usage we're seeing with online payments?
Um, not, not crazy, um, we've gotten a few baseball registrations, yes.
Oh, good, oh, good.
We've gotten one, um, two, I think they're back, two summer rec registrations. I'm, I'm still trying to navigate what is the best efficient way to try and do it. So Morgan and I have kind of, because she does the water sewer business, so we've kind of been working together about how to, how to do it. The test is going to be made first, when we send bills out and see how fast and furious they come in and, you know. So, I will let you know in June how it really goes. But, I mean, the system, it, it in general is, is okay.
So you mentioning Tom reminded me of the Super Summer Sign-up Night, which is the annual sort of convention of kids recreation programs for the summer will be April twenty-fourth in the elementary school. For anyone who's interested, if anyone sees this video, that is the.
April twenty-fourth?
Gym cafeteria.
Oh, thank you, cafeteria, thank you.
At, at what time?
Six.
Okay, well the registration's all done.
Okay, Tammy's been excused, my only comment under the mayor's report is that the deer management program did conclude another successful season at the end of March. Fifty-six deer were taken, which is up a little bit from last year. No incidents to report, I don't think they had any lost deer this time around, so every, all the participants seemed, seemed enthusiastic about continuing in the fall.
Do you have any of the stats, like how long it took them to get those?
Bert Blossi is gonna be doing a full year-end report, which he'll, he'll give to us, I can present.
Do you want me to call EWS and have the dumpster?
Yes.
What typically happens to the deer? Are they kept by the?
Most of it is donated to the Southern Shore Food Bank.
That's what I thought.
The participants are allowed to keep some, but fifty-six deer is more than the participants can keep, so most of it gets donated.
I think some of the folks that host sites also can.
Yes.
Take some of them.
Alright, now item number nine on the agenda is acknowledgement of correspondence, I don't believe we had any written correspondence to this board in the past month.
Uh, the Lake Street complaint.
Yes.
We did.
And I bring that up because I drove through dinner and I stopped, I think they're right, I don't think it works, you can't. Deb, are you driving this?
I never thought it was gonna work.
I, I was hopeful, but I do not think.
I, I still don't think it's a problem, I never thought it was a problem, I think that I can see it's fine. And, but, but it requires you to stop before you make that left-hand turn, you can't just blow through it and make a left-hand turn. And I have to tell you, I have driven it and somebody's been stopped at the stop sign and I've stopped to look because that's how I've always done it. And they're confused because I'm stopping the turn.
Looking at each other?
Yeah, yeah, we're looking at each other, so.
Anyway, nice to have, what is the whole entertainment thing? I forgot.
Well, the bank?
Yeah.
So Jope's.
Jope, yeah, so I am saying it right, I just didn't want to like butcher their name, so, anyway, so I stopped in there and talked to them because the only way I can see to make it work is to eliminate all of the precipice bushes there that sort of block the corner and they were not into that idea, I didn't think they would be, but I thought I might as well stop in and, uh, that is apparently their cap.
No, but you know, there's a house, that's why they don't want them taken.
You didn't receive a fair number of compliments about the stop sign on our virtual village hall page.
About that stop sign?
Yeah. The, the, the problem is you can't see around the corner, the stop sign is not gonna fix that unfortunately, but what it does do is it slows people down, right, at that corner, in any way that you possibly can.
Right, but the concern is absolutely genuine that if you're stopped there and you want to keep going, you can't see if there's oncoming traffic, right? So if someone's turning, they have the right of way, but you can't see them.
You couldn't see it when there wasn't a stop sign, right?
Then you had the right of way, so it didn't matter.
Well, then you just T-bone somebody else, like that, that's the problem, is that like when you're coming around that, you can't see who's coming down to make a left-hand turn. So at least now you have to stop and you're, if nothing else, you're going slower when you have an accident now. I mean, the.
No, as, as Deb points out, you can make that turn and see as long as you approach it slowly. The difference here is if you're stopped, you can't see who's coming, and if you pull out, you do not have the right of way. So you're, you're in a real bind there, right?
If you're coming down the hill making a left past the water, there is no way you can see anyone coming. I mean, it's just, there's just not enough distance there.
If you go really slow and you pull down well into the intersection, you can see.
You can see, I know it every day. I've been doing it every day for thirty years. It's like, the, the difference is, is I don't go down and just turn left, I go down and I pull out enough so that I can see up, let's see the, the downcoming traffic. And then I move across.
The reason I like that line down the road is that where the gap was, was further into the intersection, I think most people sort of turn and take a corner and will take.
Well, I can tell you there are people that come up and down that thing and they're all over the place and they don't pull into their own side until they see somebody coming anyway.
I mean, the difference we're saying, like people don't stop anyway, you know, I mean, it is what it is, but.
I, I don't see any problem seeing around that corner and I never have, that's why I was like, okay, go ahead and put a stop sign on, just.
A lot of people do it, I, I see, you have to be very deliberate.
I am deliberate.
If you're not familiar with the intersection, I see the problem.
Yes, and you have to be very deliberate on that road anyway, there are children that walk and there are no sidewalks. And if it's not children, the adults are dumber.
Okay, so there was that one piece of correspondence. Uh, item number ten, old business, I'm actually gonna table the phone system quote because I thought we had an updated one, but I don't see it in the Dropbox. So I'm gonna table that till May. Night by LED light conversion.
Set there?
Why is that on there?
I think that's just because you signed.
I already signed it.
I mean, so, we got the presentation glass meeting, but the paperwork came after that.
I think we approved, right, we, we did it through email, so.
Right, okay. The LED light conversion has been signed, so we're now in, in that queue when they have the number of requisite participants. They will move forward. Any other old business? Item number eleven is new business, South Street's sidewalk community build in front of Jack's house.
So, the important business, right? We, I've been talking with Alan Vogel and Dusty about doing a community build for the sidewalk between the Methodist Church and Wig Street on South and in front of Jack's house and a couple others. The hope is to get that kind of put together and out of the way before peak mowing season in May, so hopefully sometime end of this month, beginning next. Weather permitting and whatnot, mostly leaving it in Dusty and Alan's hands, though they would very much appreciate additional hands to help. So I've asked them to, you know, keep in touch with me when we get closer and they've got a rough sense of when people will be needed for things like spreading out gravel, placing the forms, pouring the concrete, all that kind of jazz. The specific thing that we need here is the money to, for the concrete, the prep work, potentially renting a smaller backhoe to kind of fit in between the trees and whatnot there, it's something that they've done previously with these builds. So there is a little over ten thousand dollars in the sidewalk reserve right now. The very rough hand-wavy quote I got from Dusty was about seventy-five hundred, but I'm not at all confident in that, so I was asked Vicki to draft up a resolution for up to ten thousand dollars out of the reserve fund. I'm open to conversation and debate around if that's just too high of a number, but it seemed like an easy way to kind of get around some of the uncertainty of what we're dealing with.
So how much of the, I mean, this is a joint bill, right?
Yep.
How much of the homeowners contributing to the sidewalk?
I'm not aware that they're contributing any, I'm not sure that that's.
They didn't contribute any on Wig Street.
Yeah.
It was, the village paid for the materials.
So, am I to assume that when we get to Cuba Street that I'm not paying for a sidewalk?
If we get to Cuba Street.
Just asking, because the people that are putting in sidewalks now, there's two houses right, Jay's area, that are putting in sidewalks now and I'm sure that had they known, they would have asked for.
would have asked for some remuneration.
The only reason we did the community build on Wig Street was to connect the school to South Street, the only reason we're doing this section of South Street is to finish what wasn't done as part of the grant. I don't foresee the village doing forty feet of sidewalk a year throughout the village and having that mean anything, uh, I think in certain spots it makes sense to do, for the bigger projects, I think it has to be grant money, it has to be like the way larger stretches have been done, um, you know, originally, the Safe Roosts School Grant was Main Street to Tamarack, we had to leave off this one section because of the money, so, I mean, I think, I think this piece makes sense, I think it has to be done on a case-by-case basis, unfortunately.
So who, whose role on this board is it to pursue grants for the other outstanding sidewalk, like, I mean, it was the mayor that took this on last night.
I have had conversations, but haven't found the money.
I'm just thinking, I, I'm actually thinking, no, Dorsey Hill, that's exactly what I'm thinking of, if we got to the bridge, let's get up the hill.
Right, no, I mean, I think, I think any one of us can, can be exploring, the Safe Roosts School Grant, we actually applied for before, and then we were turned down, so it's that specific grant we've targeted a couple of times, just got lucky and we got it this most recent time, I'm not aware of sidewalk specific grants outside of that, uh, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't look. Probably something under the, uh, general walkability infrastructure stuff in general, and I know that's a hot topic in general, and not, not that I know things specifically, but that would be a, a place to look. Um, so, you know, for what's left in the reserve, I think that it's, I'd like to not spend all of it, but I'm okay with authorizing it if.
Okay.
Uh, I don't recall what the Wig Street section cost, I don't think it was ten, but.
But then you know that this money really would be available till May eighth.
That's right, that, that's exactly why I'm doing it now.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I, I mentioned that to Dusty about the, yeah, starting May eighth, so he's, he's aware of it.
Okay.
And when did we want it to happen, the actual construction?
Hopefully sometime end of this month, beginning next, end of April, beginning May, I know Dusty was, was concerned about time crunch on the DPW once full mowing season kind of gets in gear, that takes up a lot of their time, so the, the rough quote I can read it out from Dusty was around three thousand for concrete, twenty-five hundred for equipment rental, a thousand for gravel, and a thousand for miscellaneous seasons, that's all told, that's seventy-five hundred.
We have at least two more snowstorms coming.
Well, and, and that's part of it, I mean, you know, if, if it gets really wet, that'll push it off, um, you know, hopefully we can find the time, you know, whatever it is, a couple of days, a week of weather that will hold, um, it, it is, it is a risk, I mean, we may end up doing this and, and it can't happen right away, we'll have to figure out all the time, but that's what we're aiming for right now.
I just say everything with my sports teams, I'm kind of in jakes, so I'm hoping that.
I was thinking, it's a good thing that we don't come armed to these meetings, that I'm like, oh, just be back.
You'll be a reverse jakes if I say it's gonna snow in a while? All right, so, I, I like the. Reverse, reverse psychology. Put forward this progressive referendum for up to ten thousand dollars from the sidewalk reserve for new sidewalk on the stretch of street.
So you're moving that?
I'm moving that, yeah.
All seconded.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, any other new business?
Should have asked this before we just approved that, I'm just curious, who, where does, would this be, would, would this fault or resident maintains the sidewalk?
It's probably, it's in the sidewalk district.
Okay, so we just don't have a wish.
All of South Street's in the sidewalk district now because of the new sidewalk to Tamarack.
The whole street?
Sidewalk district currently.
You bought a new sidewalk.
Sidewalk district currently is Sure Save to Hector Street. Sure Save to Hector Street, Lake Street, South Street to Tamarack, and Wig.
Wow.
So, yeah, I was.
That's big.
No more shall we for you?
I'm not saying it.
But I will warn you, when they go through and they clean that sidewalk, it just pushes into your driveway.
That's true.
Can I keep the worms under the stone, so that's all?
There you go, you're the only house with stones, I noticed, everyone else has got the concrete, so.
Mine's the easiest.
Yeah.
Most level.
Start thinking about what you wanna do with those stones.
You're speaking about it too.
All right. Item number twelve is approval of abstracts.
Do you want to start at the bat or start at the front?
We'll start with a general fund.
Okay.
The amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
I move that we pay from the general fund, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Second, um, what is the summer rec error?
Um, somehow Tom's pay got un, got activated and started being unactivated, so he had to read the report down, so I had to reverse the money.
Very good.
Next, is he in MS billing?
So we have a motion for the.
Nice.
See, Jack, we have a motion to pay the general fund abstract, did you second that there? Any other discussion? All in favor then of paying the general fund abstract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Take care, Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
You're gonna miss the approvals.
We have an EMS billing abstract in the amount of nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
I move the EMS abstract for nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Next up, the water fund, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and six cents.
I move that we pay one hundred, sorry, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and six cents from the water fund.
Second. Any discussion? If you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Sewer fund abstract, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents.
I move that we pay twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents for the sewer fund.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And last but not least, trust and agency in the amount of thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars and fifty-one cents.
I move that we pay for trust and agency, thirty-six thousand, one hundred dollars and fifty-one cents.
Second. Any discussion? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Bills are paid.
Thank you.
Everyone left, so there's no need for a second public comment period, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss police and EMS personnel.
So, well.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.